I will call the meeting to order. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, I would just ask, unfortunately, what's become sort of a continuing theme at times at my school committee meetings, at our school committee meetings, is I would ask if we could just say, or take a quick moment of silence for what happened in Seneca, Lareda today. So if we could take a quick moment of silence. Thank you very much. I'd ask if you could stand, if you're able, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Our first item of business is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? And seeing no one, I will move on. A report from our student representative, Natalia Parkinson. Hi, Natalia.
For past events, on October 25th, a select group of students from the MHS Student Council attended the Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Regional Conference at Wallbrook High School. The group of students participated in a walk to support breast cancer, attended leadership workshops, and the 2019-2020 president-elect was chosen, being Noah Miles, a junior at Middleborough High. Also, on October 25th, the Henry B. Berkland hosted their annual HBB Big Blast. This event was put on by the HBB PTA and had a huge turnout. The profits gained from the event will be going back to help the students. On October 26th, the senior class of 2020 attended their senior mystery ride, being a daytime lunch cruise around Boston Harbor on a Spirit of Boston cruise. This event was a huge surprise, and the class of 2020 had an amazing time on the cruise. On October 30th, the Halloween Fun Fest was held at the high school, with members of the MHS Student Council hosting the event. There were games, activities, and candy for the students. The annual fall show this year, being the Crucible, was hosted by the MHS Speech and Theater Workshop on November 1st and 2nd. The show had a great turnout, and the cast and crew put on the amazing show. As the fall sports season comes to an end, many teams were very successful. Girls' field hockey, soccer, and golf made their tournaments. At the South Shore League Tournament, MHS cheerleading placed third. Cross-country also did very well, as they competed in the state championship meets, with Shay Gallagher, a junior, qualifying for the All-State Meet, and Paula Giovinoni finishing with the highest time in 10 years. The MHS Talent Show was hosted last night, November 13th, with many students and family members in attendance. Steve Roy won, as he played the piano and sung. Yesterday, November 13th, and today, November 14th, pilgrims came to the MECC to educate the students about their life. The students were able to participate in a group lesson and also in a hands-on experience. The MECC's parent-teacher conferences began last night and will be concluded tonight. Moving on to upcoming events, tomorrow, November 15th, the Nichols Middle School will be hosting their annual Fall Frenzy after-school from 2:30 to 4:30. As of today, 200 students are expected to be in attendance. On Friday, November 22nd, MHS will host their annual 21st Century Learning Conference. This year's theme is diving into the real world. On this day, all classes within the high school are suspended, and students get to attend different classes, teaching them a variety of different 21st Century skills. Also, on Friday, October, November 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the MKG will be hosting their Holiday Extravaganza. Presale ticket order forms have been sent out to their students. Another event that will be taking place on November 22nd is Mr. MHS, a fundraiser hosted by the class of 2020, where boys of the senior class put on a show and compete for two senior prom tickets. On Monday, November 25th, the annual Powderpuff Football Game will take place at Battis Field at 6:00 p.m. The junior class of 2021 will be competing against the senior class of 2020. There will be boys from each grade cheerleading for the girls. Following the game, there will be a bonfire at Battis Field. On Tuesday, November 26th, the annual Thanksgiving pep rally will be hosted at MHS. There are numerous class competitions, such as gym decorating and games throughout the rally. This event is used as a way to create amazing energy, as the football team prepares to play Carver High School on Thanksgiving, November 28th, at 10:00 a.m. at Battis Field. On Tuesday, November 26th, the MECC will be celebrating Massachusetts Literacy Month by having a Drop Everything and Read Day, along with having Big Ryan Storyteller coming to read to the students. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalia. Does anyone have any questions, Miss Giovinoni? Thank you very much, Natalia. We appreciate it. Any member of the school committee have anything they wish to bring up? Mr. Giovinoni?
Thank you. You, actually Natalia brought it up about cross-country and Shay Gallagher. That girls' team went 6-1 this past season. It's one of the best seasons they've had on record, and I think there's only one graduating senior from that group. That whole group is coming back for next year, and Shay will be a senior then. That team is unbelievable. They could compete almost, maybe even make states next year. I think it's something that they could do. So that girls' team is phenomenal. So, and my son did okay, too. Sorry. Thank you.
Please congratulate your son for us, Mr. Giovinoni.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? Then, I know Mr. Catino is not here tonight, so I will turn it over to the superintendent for his report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. We have a number of presentations this evening. Our first is from Lisa Grimes, principal down at Mary Kay Good School. Unfortunately, Lisa could not be here for the full MCAS presentation due to the untimely and unfortunate death of her dad. Our thoughts and prayers were with her and continue to be. We welcome Ms. Grimes, and thank you. And you have some interesting news about the MCAS and the MKG.
Oh, good. I'm gonna skip this. I do, before I start, let me get to the Mary Kay Good. Okay. I don't know how to make it bigger, but, so another tech-savvy, sick. Tech-savvy one. This one, Melanie?
F5, so far.
Yeah, of course, that's F5.
I have a Mac, so, sorry. Thank you. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Before I start, I do want to say thank you. Oh, it didn't work, but that's okay. But thank you. Oh, or not. I got you. Thank you. Like, why Mac doesn't look like this? Thank you, Dr. Gates. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, before I begin, I'd like to just say thank you for this opportunity to be reassigned at this time. It was a, been a very difficult couple of weeks for my family, and many of you did reach out with your concerns and your thoughts and your prayers, and I greatly appreciate it, as well as my entire family. So, here we are to talk about the MCAS results and the results and where we're going with the results at Mary Kay Good. So, our area of strengths for this year, sharing over time with the 2017, 18, 19, as you can see, in grades 3 through 5 in ELA, our average skill score, our growth, our achievement percentiles. From 17 to 19, as you can see, there has been gains in those areas, in our average skill score, along with our growth, and along with our achievement percentile. In math, as you can see, we've also had growth from 2017 to 2018 and 2019 as well. With science, it's a little different, because we don't have, they change the test, as you know. So, we have the results from 2019, and our achievement percentile being 58, so we're really proud of that. And that's with our focus, with Discovery Ed and kind of a real heavy focus on that moving forward as well. Does anyone have any, do you want to save the questions till the end? Is that easier, or? Okay. Our areas, as you can see, meeting or exceeding our, meeting exceeding expectations in 2018 in ELA, and the comparison with 2019. So, we're seeing increases in ELA, we're seeing increases in math, and we're seeing increases in science, with our students meeting and exceeding the expectations. All students in the areas of achievement and growth, we exceeded our ELA and science targets. We met our target in math, we had high growth in math, and we met in our chronic absenteeism. And I did note that, because last year, we did not. And that was a focus for us, and it continues to be a focus for us again this year. It's one of those things, unfortunately, you know, because our attendance is in the, you know, ranges in the 96th percentile, that, you know, a couple of kids can really push you in either of the directions. So, we've been really pushing this year on having families really understand what that looks like, what absentee looks like, that it's, you know, all grades, grades 1 to 5, that we're really focusing on getting our kids in school every day. Our students with disabilities, we're really proud of the achievement. We exceeded in both ELA and science with our students with disabilities. Specific areas of strength in ELA, and in the specific standards in ELA, was in the word knowledge, language structure, and figurative language, and in math, number sense, and operations and algebraic thinking, and in science, life science was a strength for us. We were above the state in most math and science standards. Our growth, we did show growth in the areas, in the area of writing in grades 3 through 5, although we're still below the state, which is a concern and a focus for us, but we did show growth in that area. And we showed, she showed really great growth with students with disability and our high needs in the area of ELA. And there's always, as we know, opportunities for growth, specifically with our essay writing, and digging even further and deeper into that in our idea and development, our writing for main characters, from a main character's point of view, and language conventions. In the area of math, specifically, the areas of fractions, measurement in data, and in science, the physical science. And the kind of overarching thing and focus is social-emotional learning, because that is a linchpin to everything that we do every single day. So, we need to make sure that, you know, we're creating that environment for students that are coming to school, and they're ready to learn every day. So, what are our next steps? Well, some of these we've actually completed. Our data, for example, we've completed grade-level data meetings, and right now, we've begun individual teacher-data meetings. One thing we found helpful is we have looked at our, the state gives us our bottom 20% of our students that, you know, we need to kind of look at and really dig deep. So, I look at those students, not only in our MCAS years, but in grades 1 through 5. And we identify our students that, what are we doing to dig a little deeper, providing interventions, providing extra supports for those students to close those gaps faster. So, we're having those individual meetings with teachers at this point. So, we start at the grade level, and we dig to the teacher level. In the area of writing, our coaches are providing instruction with a focus on writing for different purposes. We are doing a great job with creating writers in our schools, but looking specifically at, not only creating the writing for the love of writing, but the, why am I writing this? Is it writing because I'm writing a personal narrative, or am I responding to reading? Because that is a very different type of writing. So, that is something that we're focusing on. We started with it last year, but we're digging a little deeper this year as well. We will have our complete implementation of the Leslie literacy model. By the end of this year, everyone will have at least the first full year of training complete. Our goal in math is for our ST math to hit our 80% completion. We were in the 60% tie, I think it was 62 or 64% at the end of last year, which is our first year. So, this year, we're looking for an 80% syllabus completion as an average. In science, we're working on continuing our curriculum mapping and working, continuing our work with Discovery Ed. The teachers did receive, we had a cohort of teachers that received some Discovery Ed training over the summer, that Dr. Gates was set up with Discovery Ed. We've already provided, those teachers have provided professional development to the rest of the staff already this year, because there is a new platform with Discovery Ed. So, how can we maximize that new platform for our students? And with our focus being social-emotional, we have the McLean Grant, and we've already had Cindy Goldrich in our buildings, working with our staff and doing some family training on executive function. We have our Character Strong with our purposeful people, and we do that every day. We make the announcement. Many of our teachers have already, working with that, we have our town meetings once a month with a focus on Character Strong, and our focus with the Word of the Month, and what does that mean to us at Mary Kay Good. Our teachers are also involved with responsive classrooms and morning meetings with our students. Oh, and, well, Nichols already went, so, sorry. So, that's where we are. Really proud of our results this year, very pleased with our results this year. But there's always work to be done, and our focus, like we said, is making sure, first and foremost, that all of our students at Mary Kay Good are coming in the door ready to learn, and hitting the ground running from there.
One of the observations that, one of the observations I had made last meeting was that essay piece, which you touched upon and you're focusing on, because it's not just you, it's across the board, it goes up into the middle school, and in the, in past years, we've talked about how that little piece of that writing piece and understanding what you're reading links back even to math.
Absolutely.
And science. So, I'm glad that you, Derek was the same way focusing on that, and I'm sure you guys are putting your heads together, and even maybe talking to Greg and what, because the seventh-grade teachers, for some reason, they've got something, they're making a click.
I think it even starts with the MECC, and we've been talking to Mrs. Latenda about that, because I think it even starts at that kindergarten level with that pre-writing, and making sure our students, and Mrs. Latenda's doing a great job with her team, with the pre-writing. So, when they come to us in first grade, you know, we're already prepared to do that.
I'm very happy that you guys, you identify, and it's across the board, so, and you're working together, because I think that that is one of those pins that, if we can put it in there, all of a sudden, other things are going to start coming together. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Grimes brings a lot of leadership strength to the table, but one of them is her analysis and her ability to analyze, which came with her from the Bedford. But she is also somebody that will sit down with teachers, and she mentioned a couple of quick notes about her data work, and her data work with the general teachers, but also her data work with individual teachers, which is so important moving forward, setting goals with them, prescribing goals based on results. This aligns closely with Renaissance data that we do receive?
It also, it actually, we, this is the first year, the BAS, the Benchmark Assessment System, which is part of what we do with our literacy model. I had the opportunity, I am a little data crazy, and I had the opportunity to start digging into the BAS, because we're all doing it now in grades 1 to 5, so it's really good data to look at. And it was interesting the last few weeks to sit down with the STAR 360, the MCAS that I had, and the STAR 360, the BAS, and the MCAS, because it's really aligning. It's, you know, and I, I try, I tell the teachers, don't give me information other than the data that I have in front of me. I don't want to, I know kind of a little bit who's special education and who's receiving certain services, but I don't look at that. I look at it just by the numbers, per se, and it's pretty telling. Even though they're not, they're really testing apples and oranges, it's amazing that it's all part of the same fruit bowl. And it really allows us to see what our kids are capable of, and going to the teachers, because it's not always about a test. It's not about STAR 360, it's not about MCAS, it's not about, but I want to see the student work. So, when I teach, when I meet with the grade-level teachers, and I say, okay, here's where we are, the teachers will say, yes, and here's the student work, and it's supporting that. So, what do we need to do now to build those interventions? And that is really, really key. But it's, it's really lining up, and the assessments that, you know, that the district has decided to go with are really spot-on to meet the needs of our kids. It's amazing.
It becomes a data-driven instruction, which is what's important.
Yeah, absolutely. It's informed decisions, is what it is. It's really, you know, having all of those pieces to move our kids is crucial. And I'm really proud of the special education students and really the gains that they've made. And we've been able to really, again, through the BAS, through, you know, ST, the reports we get from ST math are incredible. And we're really able to dig deep into, you know, where our kids are, and how can we get them to move and grow.
First, I just wanted to say how exciting it is to watch the numbers over time, especially when you consider that this isn't just an improvement in score, it's literally gaining on everyone else in the state. And so, it's really exciting to see things like math, 2017, 39th percentile, 2018, 57th, and now we're up to 63rd. That's some exciting stuff. So, I wanted to acknowledge that. But I also wanted to point out a difference that I see. And granted, there's been growth in ELA as well over the past three, but when I was comparing the numbers here versus the HBB numbers, they're almost 11, 11 points higher. And I was just wondering, I'm sure that you guys work together all the time, do you already have some, you know, some things that they're working on that you want to adopt?
Yeah, it tends, we tend to be more, our math numbers look better, and their ELA numbers look better. So, it's kind of, and we share the same kids, basically. So, it's interesting. And we do share those conversations, and we do, you know, we've been trying to put our heads together for the same reason, because, you know, Mr. Thompson will come to me and say, your math and science numbers are here, and, you know. So, yeah, it is sharing those practices, absolutely, because our, we would love the numbers to be equal all the way across. Some days they are, some days they aren't. But you're absolutely right, and having those conversations are important for our kids. And we're sharing our resources. And, you know, when we make decisions of, for example, purchases, you know, we look at, what do we need to do to move our kids? For example, I decided with, along with our coaches this year, our bookroom, for example, for our guided reading, that was something in conjunction with the coaches to say, we need to beef that up. And we did. We put a big investment in money, that we budget money, to beef that up, because that's what we felt we needed to do to move, to move our ELA numbers. So, that was something absolutely that we did, and that was a decision we made for that reason.
Just to point out, though, consistent progress still, so, not a bad thing. But that's good to know that you guys are working on that. Thanks.
And, Ms. Roble, that's sort of vertical curriculum alignment, and we also do horizontal and vertical. So, we work together, and that's part of Dr. Gates' job, is to work with the elementary folks and sit down with them and analyze that data at that level, and do those comparisons, and find out what's working and what's not working. So.
The science, especially in the area of science, especially, that was a wonderful opportunity that Dr. Gates provided over the summer, to have some teachers work directly with Discovery Ed, the consultant, excuse me, from Discovery Ed, that now we can take back. And we've already, you know, had that opportunity to meet with our entire staff and roll that out, and working with the, you know, building our curriculum maps and trajectories, so we know what's being taught, where, when, and able to, our next thing is to, how do we build our common assessments? So, we're able to monitor that as well.
And that's the train-the-trainer sort of module that we use, that they go, few staff members go to training over the summer, then they come back, and they're basically certified or licensed to be trainers for that, whatever that is, discovery science or ST math, and they do the workshops themselves with our faculty, instead of our faculty having to go outside of the building.
To be able to do that, because, and have that opportunity, because, as you know, things come up in the middle of the day, and you can't pick up the phone and call a consultant. But if I can go down the hall and ask someone, and, you know, can you come stop by my room? And so, to have that immediate response to something is incredible.
That's very exciting stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Chair, I would invite Mr. Paul Brandigan to come down and talk about his proposed Middleborough High School class of 2020 final activities. This is an active group, Mr. Brandigan. They have been, they have been working at it fundraising ever since before day one, I think.
Very busy.
Yeah, yeah. It's quite an active class.
They are. They're wonderful. And thank you for allowing this to come on your agenda. As each year, we present to you the proposed calendar that we would like to be able to make official, so that way there, that our families in the senior class can begin their planning for the important day that will happen on the first Saturday in June. So, the schedule that you have in front of you just takes us through the exam days, and we were able to do the calculations of what days would be black days and orange days, but ultimately, that's always contingent upon any delays or snow that we may have during the upcoming season. But ultimately, the senior week, what is interesting about this year is that where the Saturday falls, the first Saturday in June, the seniors actually gain an extra week of school. So, they're not very pleased about it, I will tell you that. So, ultimately, what we had to do this year is that our entire structure changed a little bit, because for so long, the good weekend going into Memorial Day weekend became their exam week, and then coming back, it was a four-day week of a senior week into graduation. This year, not so much. So, the week coming back from Memorial Day will become the exam week. And you'll notice the 29th of May is really a day that we have, we have had in the past, and it's a day where they do not come in unless there's a need to come in. There is so much important work that has to be done to finalize senior grades and all of those pieces. But the students who will come in on that day are students who still owe anything in terms of service hours, or makeup, or any of those kinds of things, so it allows us to have one day of regroup. You'll notice, in working with the senior class president, Krista Chain, we put together this schedule. On Monday, May 1st will become the actual senior week, with senior meeting, clean out all of the pieces that we do. It will also be the yearbook distribution, as well as the senior barbecue. We will hold that, is to be determined, but we will have a barbecue that day. What's important is, is that their senior night is going to be in the gym that evening, and I bring it up, because we'll be able to really do something very special. And I do want to give a thank you to the class of 1989. They had their 30th high school reunion back in July, and they decided that with the resources that had left over, they want to put it towards the senior class and to do something special for them. So, we decided that it would be used for that senior night and doing something nice for that class at that time. So, maybe an extra few pizzas or something like that, we'll be able to do. On June 2nd, we've contracted with Granite Links in Quincy, which will be the location of the senior prom. We've had two other proms there over the last years, and it is really by far one of the favorite places to go. It's an outstanding facility, and they do wonderful, wonderful job with students, and I'm really excited they chose that venue. Wednesday, June 3rd, is scholarship night, and that will be an invitation that all of you will receive ultimately for these big events that are coming. And we'll be coming forward to you after the holidays for the approval of the, any new scholarships and things of that nature. That's an invite-only event for any students that are receiving scholarships that evening. Thursday, June 4th, Senior Last Assembly, the awards night, of course, all of you will be invited to that as well. And then on Friday, June 5th, of course, is the senior walk that we will do, the parade through all the schools. And on Saturday, June 6th, is the graduation for the class of 2020. What is important to note about this class, if you didn't know, and for the community, that this class will be the last class to graduate from the current Middleborough High School. But what is so special about this group is they were the very first class into the brand-new MECC. So, in terms of just their journey of starting in a brand-new space, and being the very last class to march out of that high school as a graduate, is really quite special for them. So, I've been working with the senior class about just some nuances of their senior week that will be a little bit different because of just the, just what this class has been able to do. So, for your comments and hopeful approval.
One of the things that I think will be most fun is, this is the first class that will walk the senior walk through a building that they attended. You know, in the past, last year, for example, the caravan stopped at both the Lincoln Lynch School and the School Street School, because those are where those kids went to kindergarten. Now, they've all, they've all attended the MECC, and so it really feels, it just adds to the walk even more so, that you're walking through all the halls that you walked through previously. So, that's very exciting. And I would also say to the parents out there that are listening, the reason we have this conversation now is it comes quick and it comes fast. And you'll be amazed at how quickly May comes. Any questions for Paul about senior week? Then, without objection, the chair will entertain a motion to accept senior week.
So moved.
For a second. Discussion. Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brandigan is remaining at the podium, because he's here to talk about the work that has been done by the Middleborough High School Scheduling Committee. Several members of whom, of which are here today, here this evening. So, Mr. Brandigan?
Thank you, too, for allowing us to be on your agenda tonight to give you another update of the block scheduling committee at the high school. And I want to thank the members of the committee that are here tonight, from Mr. Deisel, and Dr. Gates, and Mrs. Jameson, and Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Disharnes, and Mr. Roberts, who are all part of the committee. It has really been, been a really wonderful experience of having this group of people work collaboratively to really come up with the structure. It has been collaborative, it has been engaging, and I think we've been able to really move through a process of really coming to you with a schedule, really just a structure of a schedule as well, and we'll share some of those pieces tonight. But I'm just so thankful for them to be here and to be showing their support of really this work. So, really, it's important just to make sure that you see the memorandum of agreement that was between the MEA, and of course, the school committee, of really just making sure that by November 30th, we were able to come back and to show a structure of the high school schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. 2021 school year. And really, the charge, which is important for the committee, but also the community to note, that really the charge of this committee was to really look at structure. So there's a lot of other pieces of the puzzle, but really, this charge was to really look at really, what would a structure of the new high school schedule look like? And also, you notice in the MOA that there was two presentations. We opted not to do the one in the end of September. And the reasoning for that was, is we had done that big survey that we did with the community, the parents and students, and the timing of it, we wanted to make sure we had that information for you. And I came before you back in October with the update of where we were at that time. So really, the rationale for change, this was really one of the very first steps that we did as a committee. And I want to thank Mrs. Davis, because she was the one that kind of took a lot of the conversations we had at the beginning and really vetted it into this statement. Because we thought it was really important that we came in front of the faculty to really, with a rationale for the change and really what we needed to be doing. What's important to note for you as a committee is that this presentation that you are seeing is the exact presentation we do with the faculty. The only thing we did differently is at the end, there's some comments that we did from focus groups, which I'll explain to you. But we wanted to make sure that for, for our faculty, that they were the very first ones to see the potential structure. And, and now you are the second group to see it as well. Really, the key line in there, bless you, is really looking at student potential for academic growth and success. And really looking at how can we move a schedule that is going to foster that and to allow for that to happen. In really looking at really, how can we create a potential five classes per day experience? But then also, something that has become really important in our school community is really this idea of a block in the day, of our X block, and what we have called now our Satchin block as well. And that became really part of that rationale. We did do that survey, which I had shared with you back last month when I visited you. We have 161 families that gave some information back and some feedback in regards to the questions that we were asking. The survey was a collaborative survey that the committee designed together. We had created a Google document and started writing down questions and some areas of what do we really want to get feedback from our families. And these were just some of the overarching pieces in terms of really looking at five classes or less per day. That really became an important element, that they were not looking for classes that you had six, seven periods in a day, where they were engaged in six and seven periods of classes every day. So that became an important element for us of saying that, all right, the five, five or less is really an important factor in what we're looking at in terms of structure. Also, the importance of meeting with a teacher every day. This was one that we, we went back and looked a little bit at the question, that because now that our students do meet with their teachers every day in the block for a semester. But really, what we wanted to make sure is, is how could they have the experience where they're meeting with their teacher throughout the entire school year? And so when we went back and looked at that question a little bit, that yes, it's meeting with their teachers every day, but I think the wording of that potentially might have skewed that a little bit. Really looking at the ideal class time, and that we looked at really just about a 60-minute range for a class. Keep in mind, right now, we're at an 86-minute period. So they're really, the sweet spot that we saw was really between that 55 and 60 minutes was really an opportunity for us. And then really, the personalization. And this really became something that, again, there was a question where I think there might have been a thought that every day there would have been a study period. And that's really not the essence of really an X block, is an aspect of that experience that would give the opportunity for a directed study, per se. So more to come on that. But that's really just some highlights of that data. So now here's the schedule, the proposed schedule. You have this in your Dropbox that I had sent over to Mr. Lynch a while back, so you could have some time to review it. The faculty was able to see this for the first time on, last Thursday at our faculty meeting. What's important for you to note is that this actually is not the schedule. It is the proposed schedule. And what I mean by that is, it's really looking at what the structure is. And really, this is what we know that we want and what came out of all the work that was done, especially following that rationale. It was really, we wanted to ensure in some way, shape, or form, that there would be a year-long experience. What you see here in this schedule is that all the different colors show different periods of the day, obviously. And that all the periods rotate. So in this particular structure, you see it's a seven-period, a seven-day rotation, where every day, students would be engaged in five periods a day, five classes, where they would drop two. So during the course of a year, they would be carrying seven classes in a year. Now, there may be elements where they would be more, because keep in mind that some courses may be semesterized and some courses may be year-long as well, but that's down the road. In this particular scenario, we knew the fact we wanted year-long experiences, which this proposed schedule will show you. We know we wanted some aspect of rotation, because we thought that was an important aspect for students, that really, when you see them always in the first period of the day, and they're very different potentially at the end of the day, being able to have that experience, that was an important element of the structure of the schedule. The personalization time was really important, the ability for us to maintain an advisory, potential office hours for teachers and students, the ability for students to have that directed time, and really a personalized time for them to say, how would they utilize that time? You're going to notice the light blue area there, that it's fixed. We had made a decision that we didn't want to have that part of the day be all this rotation, at least in this current structure. We wanted to make sure that it had some stability and some structure in the day, that it was going to be at the same time every day throughout the rotation. So that's why you see that color unified throughout the entire day. It also, one of the elements that's not in here, because it wouldn't show it in this sense, but there was an element of really having the ability for common planning time for teachers. And we believe the fact and the structure, as we start working within that structure, that we'll be able to get that time for teachers. So it would be a common planning time. So the content areas would be able to meet within the cycle, to be able to do actual work collaboratively as a department, which has always been something, even in the current schedule, that has always been a goal for that high school, is to make sure we could get that. It has not been an easy task to do. So we're hopeful in that. What you don't see in here, and this is why I say to you, that what you see here is really where we are at with the structure. We really need to be looking at times, because we're still vetting some of that out in terms of really the passing time in relation to really the periods per day. You're looking at really locked blocks, because there may be a potential that this, what you're looking at is constant rotation all day long. But really, what we need to look at is, is some conversations about a locked block, which means the fact you may have the morning that rotates, but the afternoon that doesn't. Or the afternoon that rotates and the morning that doesn't. So there's some elements of that that we still need to work through in seeing really, how do you fit everything into that schedule? It's also the drop two. Right now, the schedule that you see, you see the seven-day with a drop two. So every day, there'd be two classes that would be dropped. One of the things we need to do and go back is, is say, is that really appropriate? Could you do a seven-day schedule, but you're really dropping one class instead of two? Or you're doing a six-ray day rotation with dropping one class instead of two? So that's some of the other pieces that still need to be worked through, because you need to make sure you're maximizing, how do you look at all of the teachers in the building with all the students at the same time, and making sure that the schedule fits? So what we know is, is that we know there'd be some aspect of a class dropping, but we now need to go back and decide, is it really a two, or is it potentially a one? So that's some of the elements. And also the Satchin block, I put that back in there, because albeit that we have identified that it would be locked into the day, one of the things that came out in our focus groups is potentially where it's falling in the day. So that maybe would be something where some have raised concern that it's really too early in the day, and should it be moved later into the day as well, to give kind of a break in the middle of the day as well. There's another element to this that is there, that we, it needs to be considered in the structure, is that the structure that we're considering is really twofold, because you have a structure of the current space that we're using, in comparison to the structure of the new space we're going into. And what I mean by that is, is your lunch period. Right now, we have four lunches in the current high school. There could be a potential that we could actually do three in the new. And that's to be determined based upon enrollment and all of those factors. So that's why some of this, you're going to see, the structure is there. We have the elements, but there's still some nuances that need to be worked through. And that's why what you're seeing is more proposed, rather than this is, this is it, because there's still some work to be done. The other thing I want to do is that with the work of Mr. Cutino, who could not be here tonight, is that he did a, a lot of data crunching in terms of minutes per student in terms of classes. This is going to look a little deceiving, because one quarter, if you look at the current schedule to the proposed, in the current schedule, one quarter equals, in our current structure, in every other day experience, from September to January, January to June. So when you're looking at a semesterized course, such as some of our electives, they really only meet one quarter, but because of our schedule, it rotates and alternates by day. The current number per minutes per class is 37, a little over 3,700 minutes of contact time with a teacher. If you now go to the right side in the proposed, the one quarter equals one semester. Because that same elective, you say, and say, we take intro to forensics. The forensics class right now meets every other day for a semester. They're meeting for a little over 3,700 minutes. In the new schedule, it would be a semester in the rotation, remind you, but it would go September to January or January to June. And it's over 4,000 minutes that students would be getting a little over. And the converse of that, if you see the one semester course, that right now is our current block. So that would be your world history class that's meeting every day from September to January or January to June. And that's about 7,500 minutes of contact hour with the teacher. If you now go to the other side, where it says two semesters, that would be that same world history class going in the alternating block or the alternating schedule, September to June, and they're over 8,000. The two areas that are a little bit deceiving is you see the three quarters and the two semesters. This is really our advanced placement piece right now. And if you're looking at the minutes per hour, it's over 11,000 and 15,000 minutes of contact time. That is an area that we need to work through, because in the new schedule and structure, that potential may not be the same. So that's an area that I will tell you had been raised as a focus area of things for us to be considering. But we knew that going in, that there may be some areas where you may not have the same amount of contact hours as you currently have as well. But in terms of the core areas, in terms of the fundamental courses, there is the uptick in terms of, of face time with a teacher as well. And then just really, lastly, the November targets. You see, I shared this slide with you back in October. For the last three days, we have been holding focus groups with the faculty. And we've had really a wonderful, we've had over 40 members of the staff come to, one of these three days or all three. And to be able to listen and to share, and it really has given us a lot of information. And I'm going to share some of the highlights of that. The goal is, is starting next week, we'll potentially be engaging some students. There's a little bit of pause there, because we really don't have something more concrete for them. And so I want to be able to engage them and get some feedback of what things they would like to see. But I really don't have something to say, all right, folks, this is it. What do you think? So there may be a little modification of that timeframe, simply just because I want it to be a meaningful discourse with students. And I want to have, to have something for them that's going to be a little bit more tangible as well. But the committee needs to just vet how we want to engage that as well. And the idea is, is that by the end of the month, we'll be able to hopefully solidify the structure and, and to be able to then move from there. And lastly, the last two pieces, and then we'll entertain questions and comments, of course, is I want to share with you some of the overarching pieces of the good. So the faculty overwhelmingly really liked the potential for year-long experiences in the core content areas. The rotation of the schedule to maximize student potential, they liked the Satchin block or that X block, they really liked that piece. The elimination of the gap in instruction areas of content, this would be things like foreign language and so on, where they may have foreign language in the first semester of freshman year and not have it again till second semester of their sophomore year. So really, that became a real highlight for content areas like math and foreign language. And really, the proposed length of classes, I think a lot of teachers really liked. It's really quite interesting, when you look at the beginning of this journey with block scheduling, when we launched it in 1997, it was really taking two periods, two lessons, and you're teaching it in one period because of the block. And really, it was overwhelmingly in conversation of really how interesting it is, you have a prime time with students at the high school level, of that 60 minutes is like prime time. They're in it to win it. And then you get that extra 20 minutes, and that really sometimes becomes the struggle of really, how do you keep that attention? And that became really something that was overwhelming in conversation over the last couple of days. And lastly, the areas of consider. And I think overwhelmingly, I think there was more things to consider or concern, because I think it's changed. And anytime this changes, there's going to be that, oh my goodness, kind of thing. So I, I think that's an important part of the narrative, of that it is change that's coming, and there will be those challenge. Overwhelmingly, this is kind of out of all three days, of just concern over implementation and timeline, enrollment numbers potentially increasing with the new schedule. Again, these are some unknowns that we still need to work through within that current structure as well. We also know enrollment numbers are going up, so that's just going to happen anyway. Would love to, the impact on staffing, would this have any impact? And that's something we're starting to work through now, in terms of really, what does that look like in a day in the life of a teacher? The loss of prep time, which we, again, we know, they all recognize in a new schedule, that's going to happen. But I think it's immediately that change is going to happen, and that, oh my goodness, that time. Going from managing four classes to seven in one time, but when you look at the number of case, of courses that students are carrying now, it's significant to over that as well. A student will carry eight in the course of a year. If you have a student who's in advanced placement, that those students are carrying even more courses because of the every-other-day approach that happens in the spring semester. So, but there is that concern that's there. Implementations on special education of just all of the pieces and moving parts of the special education program in at the high school, and just some of that apprehension there. Implementations on programming, such as early college programming and the senior internships. But again, that all becomes part of the building in that structure. So these are the immediate responses and reactions. And now we need to go back to them and give, all right, well, here's our punch list, and here's the items we need to be doing. And then lastly, the time for lunch, there was some concern of how early it is in the day. But also, there was a lot of people who were commenting the fact that many of our students are not eating breakfast. So by that time of the morning, it's time for lunch for them. So there was a little bit of a give and take on that. And also the timing of the Satchin block, which I'd shared with you earlier, that there's some consideration, should it be in the morning, or should it be more in the middle of the day? So, so that's, that's all we got so far. So an opportunity for questions, and I know the committee that is here is willing to add any items or answer any questions that they may have a little bit more of an expertise in.
I have a wide variety of questions, if that's okay. So first, the Satchin block piece. Do you see that as potentially, that's when you would have rallies or, you know, the wide variety of things that goes on in a school, you know, talks, everything like that?
Potentially, yes. And for the most part, it would be. For example, if you're doing a class meeting for elections, say, you would do it during that Satchin block. I mean, if you're doing kind of an assembly where it may be longer, you could do it during that X block, and then be able to simply just modify the beginning and end times on either side. But for the most part, what the goal is, is that block now becomes when we do our, that kind of stuff. It could be a club meeting during that time or something. What you're also going to notice in the Satchin block, that it's not the same thing every day. So it's all part of the rotation of the schedule. So there would be research having to be done on an online program that many schools use that have the system, where the students are actually going into the system and they're signing up for what they want to do. So it could be that Mrs. Davis is going to be hosting a study hour for students that need it, and she can go in and actually sign those students to that study group. It could be also students being able to own their learning. And that's really what you're seeing in this whole sense of personalization, is kids learning, owning their learning. So it's allowing them to, how would they manage their time? And it's also then, how do we structure that to make sure they're managing their time as well? If that answers that question.
And I guess, given the vast majority of things that would happen, as you, as you, if you push Satchin time back later in the day, then that really becomes, that's, you're going to lose some of that time for lunch, too. I mean, there's a potential to, you know, it's, it's six and one and a half dozen, no. The other question I have is, since this is discussion about 2019, 2020, and it'll be half and half for the high school, it'll be half in the old school, half in the new school. One of my major concerns would be, for example, on the program that we bring over here, because now you're dealing with shorter times, and then you still have to transport kids over here for the audiovisual stuff and the TV pro and everything like that. So that would be one of my concerns for those kids. I, obviously, I'm concerned about the internships, and I, as you guys are, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I guess the other piece I have, as far as class, as far as the structure of classes, one of the things that would concern me is one of the things that I have consistently heard from parents and students about the current block schedule, is because of what they need to take. For example, they can't take band. And so I think the potential exists that you could have a large influx of kids in certain band classes that are, in some ways, larger classes anyways. Do you know what I mean? So I'd be concerned about that, especially for Mr. Pittsley.
I think he'd like that, probably.
No, but you know what I mean? I mean, there's still, there's still grading, and there's still pieces that have to go on. So that's going to add to it, too. I will say this, though. I guess the other concern I have is around staffing pieces. And I don't know, we know going into the new school, there would be, there are going to be two new positions in the new school. One is going to be for, we're going to bump the outside custodial piece to a full-time piece. So we knew that going in, that was a groundskeeper. And the second piece is, we knew we're going to have to hire somebody for the makerspace. Now, that doesn't necessarily, that, depending on when that starts, I don't necessarily know the makerspace person will start September 1st. But I assume they're going to start sometime before the new school opens, because of the work that they'll have to do on that particular makerspace. So, given where I know we're at with budget, I don't know how much more we're going to be able to add, given- be able to add, given everything else that's gone on. And, you know, we do have some issues, we have frozen accounts right now, so we know that going in.
Just two items for you. One, that in the current schedule with the conflicts, you're absolutely right, there always is. And when we go to do the master schedule every year, we prioritize classes, so things like band and orchestra and those get the highest priority. And then everything, when it gets loaded in, everything gets loaded in around it. So when it becomes, if it's a perfect schedule that the students signed up for, it's beautiful. But if they've also signed up for all these other courses that are singletons, that's where sometimes it gets a little kind of interesting, because those singletons could all be happening at the same exact time, and that's sometimes where they may have to make that choice. One of the things that we started to do in this, in this kind of design, and I'll, I'll take you back just to the sake of it, is the, looking at current student schedules, and we took an array of them and started actually looking at how they would fit. So we took everything from the student who has nineteen AP courses and band and everything else, and started actually taking that document that you see in front of you and actually start filling it in. And what it allowed for us to be able to do is, is to be able to see, all right, well, we still have a lot of room to play, right? We also identified the fact that, well, in some situations, we didn't have a lot to play. So then, that's all part of that, next, part of the next layer of this, is really looking at, well, what does our scope and sequence look like, and what do our courses look like, and when do we offer certain things? And, and keep in mind the fact that that's what we're doing now anyway, because next year, to your point, is a transition year. So the whole program of studies has to reflect moving into a new school. So that's all happening now in, regardless, and so, but some of those schedules, we've started to do that process of vetting it, of taking the classes now and putting it into a new framework.
I mean, you know, some of it, I think the problem that you're going to run into more than anything else is the, the half year in one school, half year in another. You know, because, like I said, there are, there are things that you normally go through now that won't necessarily happen anymore because you're able to, to function much better in the new place. So I think, you know, I think it's a hard, you know, but by the same token, you're also trying it. I mean, one of the things that we talked about was, this is a trial to sort of see how it's going and take a look at it, and we were going to revisit it afterwards to say, okay, what's going, what's not working, you know, what's working? The point being that it was, it was, it's not, let's, we're just going to do this and leave it, we're going to still have conversations about it afterwards to make sure that everything's going the way we had hoped and anticipated. But thank you all for your hard work, I really appreciate that, it's really interesting. I think, in my mind, it, you know, it's what we talked about, it's the, the structure of what we had looked at and decided that we wanted to change. And, and just so, I mean, to be honest, I, you know, yes, this did come from a contract, but I think the biggest thing the community needs to know is, Paul, how many years have you had this discussion about changing the schedule?
Oh, a lot, a lot.
It's not like it came up this summer and we just decided to do it. This has been an ongoing discussion since I've been on the committee and I'm about to enter my seventh year. So, yes.
I, I, yeah, thank you for looking at this. First, I was, I was sitting in, we're sitting in those meetings and we said, we've got to do something about this, we have an opportunity, we were talking about moving into a new school, and we were talking about the effects on the teachers and the courses that are offered. And one of my concerns were, I, we wanted to start it in a new school, but what if we don't? I, I'm a realist. The incredible amount of work that's been done so far, I don't want to twist someone's arm and say, you have to do this right away. I don't, I, I want, I know you're working hard on this, can we, can we do it for next September and get in everything we need to do? Or, I mean, as much as I'd like it, the reality is, well, we could implement, I don't want to, I don't want to do it and rush through it. I know you wouldn't do that, but I just, I don't want to put that much of the pressure. I think of what you guys are going through right now, preparing to do the new school, so, and I'm not trying to put it off, but my thought is, do you need more time?
Well, your memorandum of agreement states that we have to have it done by, for two thousand twenty for this coming fall, so we have to have it done. So I, I, that's what the memorandum of agreement is, so.
I think one of the biggest things about that is the, and everyone here can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, part of the conversation that came out of negotiations is the idea that we have talked about this forever. You know, again, since I've been on the committee and I know this predates me. But what has always happened was that there weren't decisions made. And so in my estimation, and I think the estimation of our, our conversation and the conversation with the teachers, is, you know, this has been vetted for quite some time. This isn't, you know, you're not, yes, there are pieces that will be problematic, yes, there are pieces that will be better in the new school than the old school, and yes, there are, you know, like anything else. I mean, let's face facts, we all know, the first day we move into that new school, there's going to be problems, because it's just the way, it's just the way things happen. Things are, something's not going to work, we're going to have to have somebody come around and fix it. It's always going to be that way. And that goes back to the idea that we had set, which was, yes, we were going to do this, but we are not doing this and never having a conversation about this, we are doing this and, and then going to have consistent meetings to say, is this working for us? What do we need to look at? But I don't want people to think, under any circumstances, this is, this is, you know, like a short period in time, because in my mind, this has been a discussion from both sides for seven-plus years that I'm aware of on this board, saying, okay, what we could do. Now, I think there has been, you know, some people who didn't want to change, there have been some people who all along wanted to change, there are some people who would like to change in, with different things, not necessarily the way this is structured. But I think the vast majority feels that something should change. And that's always the, that's the sense I've gotten from teachers, I've gotten from administrators, and I've gotten from parents, and students, those who I know who've gone through it, and like I said, who have had problems. For example, there are kids who've always wanted to do band, but if you do a lot, if you wanted, if, there has always been the choice, I can either do a lot of AP courses or I can do band. And that, to me, for some of those kids, has been tough. And we've had, I don't know if everyone's been here, we have had people come here, young students, and ask, come with ideas about, for example, about gym. One of the things she came up and said was, I have a problem that I have to take gym, but I'd rather take AP courses. So I'd rather have you find a way for me to get out of gym. And so there's always been this dialogue, and I know Paul has looked at that, and we've, we talked about it, and we talked about what, what we could do differently. And it, it all revolves around scheduling. And so, yeah.
When, when we were discussing schedule during negotiations in the MOU, I didn't even dream of this. So, and, and when I saw this and I was going through it, it, I think I got a date, yesterday, I think I started looking at it, and I really started looking at it, and I said, wow. Because one of the biggest concerns that I have is, with everything that's going on in a student's life, and everything goes on in a, from a fourteen to eighteen-year-old's mind, the last thing you want to do is, even though they do it over here and they rotate these schedules, is it something that's going to be, you know, difficult to just implement? Because they're trying to schedule their time already, what's, you know, what's another twist, literally a twist in a schedule? But this seems so easy to follow, too. It wasn't a, this day, it's this way and this way, it's, it just, it rotates out, whichever class you have, first period today, you won't have for the next two days. You'll come back, and it'll be at the end of the day, and it'll work its way back through. It, it seems like an easy way to follow it. I liked the, the Satchin block. I, I, at first, I was like, what, you know, really could be done, but, but then I said, what could be done? It was, it was, what is it going to be to what potential there is in there? And it's, it's like a college almost piece where you would have that ability, you'd be scheduled to be with, with, with a teacher. Or need additional, maybe additional time during that AP class, an AP science class to, if you had to take a little more time to do something, you'd have it. Because that was one of my concerns, is how would an AP science class get that extra time for a lab? That really, they really need that lab time. So, and I know you guys are thinking about it, but those were the things I was thinking about. Lunch period, I had, you know, I'd love to see how that's going to build out when, when you have that lunch period, because that nine forty-nine was early, it becomes brunch. It's only ten fifteen, I think, now for that, for ten twenty for that first one, or whatever, but it becomes a brunch, but if you go to three, it pushes over, you're back to where it was. So I'd like to see how that's going to build out in final. And like you said, if the Satchin block pushed down period two and they swapped or something, who knows? I think the structure, the way it was presented is, is kind of what I was, I didn't think of it, but it's what I'm looking for myself personally, where students can take seven classes, some of those classes full year, some of them half year, so they still have that depth and breadth of ability to take classes.
Paul, just thinking, I just have one quick question. The A through G day, is that, is, is the plan that those days are when class is in school? So for example, whatever day, you'd start on day one would be an A, and if day three was a holiday, would that be, would the C be gone, or would it just go C the next time?
Actually, would go with the day. So if we missed a day, it would just continue in the rotation. It would just have to be making sure the fact that it's, the only caveat would be, is the structure and Aspen to be able to do that, to jump? So like when we miss a day now, we have to go in and actually, so there's just some, you know, pieces to that, but that's kind of what I think would be the goal.
That's fine. That's why I just wanted to review, I guess.
Just if I may, I just want to comment on, because I think it's an important part of the, when you, the narrative of this journey. We've had many block scheduling committees, and when we get around the table, all of them have always been, so what would you like to see? And so you've got fifty different opinions, and you can only get so far. But one of the things that came, that has been continually happening, is research of what other schools are doing. So when we actually started this experience with this block scheduling committee, it was a very, very different focus, because it wasn't about what's our vision, it was really about, really, what is a structure? And that became a very different kind of conversation. So really, instead of coming in with my list of all the things that I would love to see, people were coming in with really, well, this is a schedule that I've been researching. So for example, even my own schedules that I brought in, I had been doing research for the last two years of schools that had a schedule like ours, that actually moved away from it, and what kind of schedule did they go to? Because you could be researching all these kind of different schedules, but you really want to be able to look at schools potentially that had the same schedule as we did and made a shift, and it's working for them. So what makes it work? So they didn't lose things, they didn't have to make huge sacrifices, and that really became part of that. And I think that everybody who brought something to the table on this committee, that was something that we started with, was really, here's a structure. And that's really where we started from that. And what became interesting is, almost every single schedule that came in from the committee had some aspect of an X block in some way, shape, or form. So that became an automatic nuance, that there was a reason why that Mr. Roberts brought the one he did and Mrs. DeSharnes brought the one she did. It really allowed for us to be able to begin the work of creating that structure. So to your point, it is, it has been a journey.
Mr. Robb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a comment and a question. The first question has to do, and it goes right with what you said, you guys researched other schedules, and having worked on a similar committee in my own district, I'm impressed with a lot of this, because this is creative, but I have not seen the drop two a day. And I was wondering if you came across any districts that had dropped two, and then how that worked out and so forth.
So there were two districts where this kind of got vetted from was, there were two school districts that had schedules, had a master schedule exactly like ours, semesterized four by four. And one of them, their entire schedule rotated, there was nothing that was stationary. And that school district had dropped the two, and they found that it was really working for them based upon what the results were that they were seeing, and really just the engagement of that schedule. The other district, they took that schedule, and they then vetted that schedule to make it fit for them. So in their particular school, they don't have as much rotation, and that X block is stayed stationary. So what we did is, we had those two schedules in particular that we worked from as part of the many that we had out on the table, and we looked at that one schedule of the dropping of two. And what we found was, is it gave them more flexibility in a schedule to be able to actually attain more options for students, which was one of the key targets that we were looking for, that we know were challenged in the current situation, that it was really about finding ways, that how much flexibility can you make? Now, to your point, though, Greg, that, one of the things that we now need to go back to is, I had to share it a little bit, a little while ago, is really, is it better to have two, drop two, or is it better to drop one? Because one of the concerns that got brought up, that I, I did put on the slide, but it was clearly a sentiment that was shared, was that by, if you are looking at, say, that schedule, you're looking at GF and G dropped on day one, and on day two, it's G and A, which means the fact that period G isn't meeting for two days in a row. And there was some concern there, that potentially, you back that up against a weekend, that's four days now, that student is not engaged at all in that class, we know the weekend they wouldn't be, but in terms of the face time. So that became something we were taking the note of, that's a really good point. What we talked about this morning, just actually yesterday afternoon, Mr. Catino and I, was actually this rotation that you see, you could actually re-rotate it differently, that those courses, if you did drop two, it's not the same two every day. And I know that even Mrs. DeSharnes had brought in this morning an updated schedule of actually some of those pieces, but we didn't share that, because this is the one that the entire faculty has seen, too. So that's why we kept it with that, but, so, yeah.
On the Satchin block, the X block. And having done, talking to students and administrators in other districts, the students really love that X block, to be able to get done what they need done, especially when you talk about AP students, student athletes, and everything else, they really do like the fact that they have a scheduled time of the day to kind of go and do that. So I love that that's built in. And then it was kind of on the other end, talking to administrators, they liked the fact that they could pull kids from classes for a variety of different reasons without pulling them from class time. So they weren't losing education to go have a discussion with their guidance counselor or anything else like that. So there's a period where they could pull them out and discuss. So it's, it's, helps, I believe, all students at all levels through that. So I'm very excited to see that, and it'll be interesting to see how that shapes up. Thank you.
I was just curious, the, the, the longer class down to the shorter class, and I totally understand that it means more options for kids over the course of a year, and that makes total sense. But I was just wondering, does, do we see any changes in, you know, grades or all these, you know, these things that we measure, you know, MCAS or whatever it is, from going from a longer class down to a shorter class?
Just an example, I don't have any particular data on our own school, but I'm going to use the year-long experience as, as we were talking about the journey of the scheduling. If you remember coming to you a few years ago about building a schedule within a schedule, it was really done, one, for a reason of looking at students who really need something different, but at the same token, it was really in many ways an experiment for us to see, how could you actually create schedules within schedules and create the year-long experience? We found the fact that that cohort of students, we created that year long, if you remember, because of, these were students that historically had always struggled in an MCAS test. We knew coming in the door from that longitudinal study that we did on each of these students, the fact that the predictor of them struggling getting over that high-stakes assessment was real. And so when we went into that smaller chunk of time, in a longer period of time, what we found is that those students, so many more of them were getting over the hurdle for the first time, and they didn't, they weren't retesting, which is really what the goal was. Were they all in proficiency range? Not all of them were, but it was a step in the right direction of saying the fact that the numbers of students that were in warning, having to retest, went down to single digits, if not any. So, so I think that's, at least in our own mind, of what we saw in the year-long experience that was positive. The school districts that we had done some studying of, two in particular, they really saw some, some kind of shift in achievement, just based upon actually being able to take a chunk of time, a little bit smaller, in a longer period of time, rather than trying to do ninety days of curriculum in, in a much, you know, in a longer block but a shorter amount of time. And really, the gaps of learning has really always been a struggle for us. You know, you've got a math class, students finish in geometry in the spring of sophomore year, if they don't double up in math, they could be taking math again in the spring of their junior year. And so some of that content isn't following with them, so you're doing a lot of remediation with students getting them back up to speed again, and the languages and some of the other areas, too, if that helps with that.
Just one follow-up, is there a school or a district that, yeah, a school that's done exactly this, that we can look at and?
The schedule that we really have since adopted or remodeling is Dartmouth High Schools. That's the one that we were working from. And Dartmouth had modeled theirs off of Andover. So Andover had created a schedule, Dartmouth did their research on them, and then we took Dartmouth's and really have done some work on theirs as well, but also utilizing the other schedules that were brought to the table, of really vetting what would work for us and what also, what wouldn't as well. So, yep.
One is on the station block. Was there a discussion about, is there a reason to do it in the morning versus later?
There really wasn't. At first, I'll be candid, at the beginning of this process, we had it at the beginning of the day. It was the very first thing they did. And we moved away from that because when you want to make something meaningful and purposeful, you want to maybe to have them, you want to create the meaning behind it. And if you have it at the beginning of the day, you're running the risk, the fact that some student may not think it's important for them to come in at that particular time. So we moved it at the beginning of the day, just simply as the placeholder, we thought it was a good spot to do it. But as we've gone through some of those focus groups, there has been some conversation, Mr. Stevens, of moving it down into maybe the next time of the day, that eight fifty-two to nine forty-six time, just to give it a little bit of a, more of the middle part of the day and giving students a break on that front. But the beginning of the day, it just seemed like it would be an appropriate time because it could be where announcements are done in the morning. It just seemed to be that it allowed for maybe setting a tone of the day potentially as well at the same time. But there has been conversation, it doesn't need to be wed there, that that's where it has to be, so.
Can I dovetail on that? If you don't mind. When I was looking at that, at the beginning of the day, like it is the second period, second after first period, I thought it was perfect because you had that ability to potentially get to a teacher before class, whereas after-school teachers are usually available from one fifty to two ten, two fifteen, two thirty, three o'clock. I mean, seen them there forever. But you'd have that also ability after school too. So you almost have two different opportunities outside of class. So I thought that was really cool, the way it was beginning or front end of the day. Then you have that after-school after, and there are teachers available before school too. But it's just one of those things, I thought it was a great location for that. So I was thinking that that whole time, I was like, oh, that's a perfect place for that. Thank you.
Did you look at rolling the other way? Like having let's say A roll down and then fall off? Because that's why they did it at Bridgewater Random. And it just, I don't know, it felt more natural than, this looks, like it just looks weird, I don't know, the way it. Because A falls off the beginning of the day and then comes back at the end of the day four, so you got almost three days, you know. So it's, I know the reason they did it was because when, when the day fell off the end of the day, it was off one day and then came back at the beginning of the third day. So you only missed, you know, the, the gap was less.
So for instance, if the first day of school was a Wednesday and you went to school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you would drop, you'd have a class and then you wouldn't have it till the next following Tuesday after Labor Day if we started before Labor Day or something like that.
But I will say, but I like the schedule and I think, I teach a vocational school that we do alternating weeks. And I thought as an academic teacher, that would be a challenge. But I actually have found it to be a pretty nice schedule because, you know, you, everybody, you know, some kids get sick of a teacher, well, they get a break. Teacher gets sick of a kid, they get a break, you know. So I think it's nice to have a break built in like that. So I mean, I actually like the alternating weeks now, because you do get that little break there. And this was, I think this is a nice, I like the two-drop actually now that I look at it. So that's all.
Sorry, I just thought of, just to follow up to the Dartmouth question. Do you know, did they also come from a, like a four-block? And when did they change?
I think this is their second year with it, to be honest. So both of the schools, they're recent in their change. And the Andover School, Andover High School, I had attended a workshop with that principal because they were talking about making changes in their schedules. So I had already kind of been, were doing some work with that principal about how they did it in anticipation of knowing the fact going into a new building, that that was kind of one of the goals. And that was actually even in the education plan about really what a day in a life looks like for a school in a new building. So, so I know that based upon what Andover did, he even said that he, looking at Dartmouth, that he would have actually, if they could have gone back and did it all over again, they would have done the stationary X block all the time. Because now in their school, the whole, that X block moves all the time in the rotation. And he said in hindsight, he probably would have done what Dartmouth's did. So now what we're doing is, is we kind of like the Dartmouth model, but now we have to make it Middleborough and make it fit what we do and what we are about, so.
I was wondering if you looked at a teacher's schedule? I think you kind of touched upon it, but I didn't know if you had like started plugging things in like you did with the students.
I, I did and I was glad no one was with me when I did it. Because if I showed it to somebody, I had taken a teacher's schedule. I took one of the history teachers because I just knew her schedule. And so I didn't have it in front of me, but I took the same exercise that I did with the students and I actually put it right into this. And what I did is I said, well, she has AP Psychology, she's at World History and I did exactly what her schedule was. And then I put in a prep period and I put in common planning time. And then alternating the common planning time, I put in a duty. Because one of the goals in the new building is that we really feel that there needs to be all in together and to have that duty time. So it wouldn't be an everyday experience, but neither would the common planning, so they would kind of rotate. What I did with the alternating, because I just did it on the whim, that on certain days, depending upon actually how the schedule fell, the teacher was teaching all five periods of the day without a prep. So then we went back and I had looked at actually one of the documents that had been shared with me from Dartmouth. And it really came, really generated some questions of the committee of like, well, how do they manage that? Because it seemed as though the teacher prep periods were always the same in the schedule. So even though the schedule was rotating, that the teachers weren't rotating. So there's some inquiry questions, we've gone back to Dartmouth with and we just haven't heard back from them as of yet. But it fits, it's just now how do you create it in terms of how many courses that a teacher will be teaching? But to ensuring that every day, they have their prep period every day. Because in Dartmouth, what they've done is their prep period is say in the, in the sample, it was every period two was the prep period across the board. But then on the days that it's common planning, they had two common planning periods during the rotation. So then the common planning maybe see where D and G is in that period two, then the prep moved down later in the day. So every day the teacher was getting their prep period. So that's why one of the structural pieces we need to look at is, is how much rotation happens in the schedule? How do the teachers rotate and how do the kids rotate as well? So, but the first schedule I did, it had, was not perfect, but, because they need a prep, so.
Thank you.
Other question? Do you want to thank everybody on the committee for your hard work and dedication? Because, you know, this is new and different and I thank you all for coming up with new and different ideas. And it's important. It's very important work and I appreciate it. So I know the whole committee does, but we do want to thank all of you and I know you still have more work to do. But everything looks great. You know, I appreciate you thinking it out and working it out. And Paul, I appreciate everything you did, so. Yes ma'am?
Mr. Chair, I, that's, one of those items is, I think of the, the alternative, I think of all these different programs that we have. We offer so many different programs outside of just regular education, opportunities for students to, that may not fit in the regular curriculum. And that's my concern, as well as everything else. I've always thought of that and I'm glad you bring that up because that's, I don't want to sit here and pound my fist saying, we're doing the September first. I don't think it's fair. It's not fair. I don't know about anyone else, but I don't think it's fair to, as much as I'd love to start the new year in a new school with this new schedule, I think it's a year from September that we need to implement this. And I'm just one person, but that's my thought. I want to make sure because we can vet this thing, we can make it so that all the, all the coursework is set up in such a way. We're going to rewrite some courses probably, there's some courses that are probably going to have to change and how it's all going to fit together. And then looking at those, those other programs, just to make sure that they're going to work. And I don't want to say a dual schedule coming into September when you're thinking about it, but how would this have fit? Would this have worked? Because that's where, you know, I just don't, we're going to have enough hiccups going into January 1st of 2021 anyway in life with students seeing everything. I don't want to have other hiccups, but that's just one person. I, I feel the same way that, I don't want to push it if it's, I know you'd, you'd make it work. You guys would make it work. I know you would. And that's why, I'm the person here taking a vote, but you other people have to implement it. And I don't think it's fair to do that to, to people. Because I want to make sure everything's perfect, as perfect as it can be.
To respond to that line of thinking, I do think it is something that is new and coming to a new school and like that. But I also think you get a chance to have a reset, or not a reset, but a tweak period when they do move from one school now. Maybe a passing time needs to change, maybe you need to shift something. You'll, you'll have a natural built-in, let's change it mid-year and just tweak it. Because what, looking at the schedule, I really do feel like it can work. I don't see any detours or roadblocks. See a few, few potholes, few bumps in the road that you need to work through that I know Meg brought up. But I think there's a lot in here that is very, there's a ton of potential in there. And there's a ton of ability and I'm very interested to see how you guys do as you do case studies to work out. But if there is a major hiccup, I think they might have that opportunity mid-year, like when they move into the new building. Well, when we move to the new building, we're going to move station block, for example, because you're finding it would work better somewhere else. And I think it does a natural shift right in the middle that you can prepare for and do. So it may be interesting to see how they can come together. My biggest concern would be getting faculty and students on board and excited about this. Because they need to feel like this is our schedule, this is my schedule and comfortable with it. Because you don't want kids going into a new school, new building, being fearful of the schedule. So having a test run in the old building may actually be advantageous to help people get over that, you know, fear and that, that possible confusion while not having to deal with new building. And then you can start it all over again in January. But I believe it would be better to, to start if they are ready. And that's again, with faculty and student approval, who it's going to impact a lot more than us every day.
Again, other comments or questions? Before you leave, Mr. Brannigan, I do want to say that sadly, the superintendent has informed me that Mrs. Jameson will be leaving at the end of the year. Sad for us, not for her. So I really want to take the time and thank her, especially since you're here tonight for this committee. And just from my own personal experience, it has been fantastic to work with you, with my two kids going to school. And you are always there to talk to anytime, anyone I needed to have a conversation or needed anything. So I greatly appreciate that and I just want to say that. And if, no one objects, Mr. Brannigan, before you leave, because we're going to talk about it in a little bit, I would ask that you could tell the committee about the week of December through the 12th, since you're here, about topping off ceremony.
We're hitting another milestone in the new high school. And that on December 12th, it will be the formal topping off ceremony, which is where the construction teams will place the final piece of steel into the building. And that comes with a whole ceremony that goes with it. So we really, we really want to ensure at the high school that it became a community opportunity and especially for families of children who will actually have their high school experience in this new school, that they would become a part of that. So on the week of December 9th through the 12th, on that Monday, December 9th, we're planning on doing a program of something to the effect of maybe steel and smores or steel and chocolate, something like that, where families could come up, could sign the steel and they can have some hot chocolate and some cookies and make it a community event for those families. We have also two major events that week at the high school between the Fall Sports Banquet on the Tuesday night. We have the Holiday Concert on the Wednesday night. So there's an awful lot of activity at the high school that would allow for the community to come in and sign the, sign the piece of steel. And then on that, the 12th in the morning, the steel would be taken out of the building and get in to be prepared to be raised. And then we would have a ceremony at 2:30 on the 12th of December, where it would be an opportunity for us to just have some words about the journey and then ultimately watch the construction team and the steel workers be able to actually raise the steel. And for that final piece as well. And they're painting it orange, which is great, so. Pardon? We'll be signing in black, that's right.
We're not signing with smores.
We're not signing with smores. So more to come on that and we'll be sending out, once we have all the pieces in place, we'll be sending out communications through Blackboard to all of the Middleborough families and, and to make sure that the community as a whole knows the next step of this process. So, so we're excited for it. Thank you everyone.
Mr. Chair, further on my agenda here this evening are superintendent's goals. And I certainly thank subcommittee members Megan Janus and Greg Stevens. Part of the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, they met with me and sort of sat with me and designed the goals. I brought some things that I wanted to bring forward, they brought some things they wanted to bring forward. And as a result, have the, I have the goals that were dropped in the Dropbox for you. Couple of district improvement goals, couple of student learning outcome goals. The first one focuses on the effort to develop a common vocabulary and an understanding of what social, social emotional learning is within the Middleborough Schools Administrative Council. And we have a year-long effort to work with Rebus and Associates to have little mini seminars and work with the, the entire administrative council on what social emotional learning is so that we have that common understanding moving into the classroom and before we can expect our faculty to, we need to understand it as a group of administrators. The second goal is basically the new before and after school program, to monitor and evaluate that implementation of that Champions before and after school program, making sure it's all we had hoped it would be. And with, with, this will feature a couple of visits from this program. They'll be visiting us in January and then again in May. That'll be part of that sort of structure. I will also be meeting them with Sarah Hickey. We've already met with them once and we're planning on meeting them, with them again very shortly in the next couple of weeks to talk about the implementation of this program. They're, they're looking to expand it. Their middle school numbers are lower than they'd like and, but they have been traditionally low at the, at the middle school anyways. So they bring a buddy program, they're starting to start some things, so we'll be working with them. So that would be goal number two. Goal number three is the, basically the transition to the new high school. And working with Mr. Brannigan and making sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted and making sure that we provide for a smooth transition when it comes to any type of contractual matter, any type of phasing matter that comes up. And working with the construction company, working with our OPM, working with our designer, which myself, Mr. Brannigan and Mr. Hutchinson and Rob DeRozier attend those meetings, so the construction meetings every Thursday from 11 to 1, sometimes 11 to 2. And sometimes 9 to 1 or 9 to 2. So, but they're detailed meetings and they're very important. And they cover every single aspect of the program. And the idea being that we need to make sure that we try to avoid those, those hiccups that we know probably inevitably may happen occasionally, but trying to look ahead, talk to other communities. I've met with a principal at, in Stoughton to talk about the experiences she's had. And she will continue to have conversations with myself. It is agreed to meet with Mr. Brannigan too, to talk about going into a new building with a DRA building and with an OPM, which was Compass Project Management. They have a very similar, similar team that they had developed, different individuals on the team, but the, the players were the same. And then goal number four is to monitor and evaluate the grant-funded MassSTEM Hub, Project Lead the Way, as well as the ST math programs to, to continue to take a serious look at those. Eventually that grant money will sort of dry up, if you will, and we're going to have to take those over as a district. And we have to evaluate the effectiveness of those programs. So those, that, that last goal was one that was sort of individually last time, but we did it collectively this year to look at that. And that will be work that will be done with Dr. Melanie Gates, quite frankly, and the principals, to see if it's worthwhile going forward with these programs. So far, so good with regard to these. But we'll have some additional information and more specific information with regard to the goals. Those are the goals we, we agreed on as, as the, and they, they're welcome certainly to comment as part of my report. And that's what they wanted to see or featured by me. Obviously I have goals that I do every single day, but these are the ones that were featured for this year.
Yeah, I thought Mr. Lynch did a great job in bringing some very good goals to him, but I, what I brought there was the building. Because I just felt like everybody who knows Mr. Lynch knows that he's not going to drop the ball on the new building transition. But I felt it was important to put it in the goals because it's going to take a lot, so much of his time. You know, that we, we should respect that and say, it is a goal of his to make sure the transition is smooth because he is going to spend a lot of time on that. And the other thing, I think we, you know, I think the Champions Program, you know, we just want to make sure that that's implementing correctly and it's a big change for our district. And, uh, it's a big change for our district. So I, I was very happy with the goals that we came up with as a team.
I was too, and it came, um, prepared with some goals that he wanted to set. And, um, I think we all kind of agreed that what Mr. Stevens said, the building and the, um, after-school program were what we really wanted to focus on.
And thank you. And all of my goals, uh, include the phrase under the direction of the superintendent's schools because all of these goals are going to require a lot of work from other folks within the school system. Other very important folks, the, the certainly the high school project, uh, is certainly Mr. Brannigan is, is sort of leading that band, if you will, and, and I, I will be working with him closely on, on making that successful. The, the, anything related to curriculum, obviously Dr. Gates is going to be very closely, working very closely with me to that end. So, uh, there's a lot of collaboration, a lot of cooperation, Sarah Hickey working with me on the Champions Childcare piece. That's so important that we want to make sure that that is an effective program. So all of those things require collaborative effort and, uh, and coordination on my part, uh, which is certainly part of the goal. But none of this, none of these goals are done singly, I would say, or in isolation.
Any questions about the goals, Mr. Oak?
Just wondering if there were any, any particular goals that the, the committee was having a tough time with, decided to drop off at the end? Any tie, um, tiebreakers or anything like that, or were these, we had two?
We had two drop, we dropped two, no, I'm just kidding.
Oh. Okay. Nice.
Can answer part of that. Mr. Oakley, uh, I think one of the ones we had last year was on the security issue. And I, I guess as a subcommittee, we felt like there was a big increase in security. There was a lot of good work done and the DIRTT team is working very hard all the time on this thing. So I think we felt like that was one that fell off his list from last year. Not because it's done, but just because it's all set, like we're, we're, you know, I, I feel like we're in a good position. And with the DIRTT team, I think it's doing a great job. So I think, you know, that was came off and the other one was, um, communications. You know, I, I think Brian came to us with a really strong communication to us and to his, his staff, uh, his administrative team. And he added the piece of communicating directly with every person in the district and they actually expanded that. So I don't know if you saw the, the newsletters that come out, but it's not only from Mr. Lynch. It's also Melanie Gates has a, a section, you know, the special ed has a section. So I think it's a nice summary each month of what the district is going in all the different areas. So I just felt like obviously he's not done with those goals, but I think in terms of what is really important this year, I think we came up with five goals that are, you know, at the top of his list.
And the, uh, the district dispatch also has Sarah Hickey in it and aptly named Giving You the Business, which is, if you've seen the headline on hers, so, in the smore newsletters. So I just wanted to give a shout out to smore newsletters because those are pretty snazzy that we have now in the district too.
So, uh, at this point, if no one objects, Chair, let's stand a motion to accept the superintendent's goals. Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions? Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Genonymous. I just would like to put out one thing related to superintendent goals. And it, it's under the action items, but it's not an action item for tonight. So the superintendent's evaluation for the state of Massachusetts has changed. The superintendent and I are attending a conference, um, uh, not this coming Monday, the Monday afterwards. Right bef- right before Thanksgiving. You are all welcome to attend if you can. It is in Marlboro?
It is, it's in Massabet Valley.
So we're headed up there. MASSS and MASC are doing a presentation on the new evaluation, but we will bring everything back to all of you who can attend. And so to put it out there for everyone to look at and understand what the new superintendent evaluation is. It's our understanding that, um, both MASSS and MASC is going to recommend we do it the way we currently do it, which is you submit them all to the chair and the chair puts it together and then, uh, do it that way. So that's the one piece that has been, um, they're, they're going to recommend, both groups are recommending for everybody. Uh, but the actual instrument will change slightly from what I hear, not too badly. But MASC and MASSS had input with the state on those evalu- on those changes.
And that's a, just a morning, I think it's, uh, 9:30 to 11 or 9:30 to 11:30. So if anyone is interested, I will certainly register you, but you do need to be registered to attend, so. And it doesn't cost any money, it's free of charge.
So, that's cool. Any questions about that? Then I will move on, anything else on the superintendent's report?
Nothing, sir.
I'll move on to MSBA. As Paul mentioned, we're going to have, well, I guess we're going to call topping off week. Because, you know, and, you know, I can't emphasize enough, we want to get as much of the community involved, especially the younger kids from all the elementary schools and the middle school to come on over and sign that beam and, and the whole community in general. And, you know, we're going to work out as many people as we can, uh, but they can come in, sign the beam and have a chance to put it up there. So I think that's going to be great. We are currently 34% complete. And with that 34% complete, we are, everything's going pretty well. And more than anything else, we are under budget still. So that is, uh, very good. Did you guys have anything you wanted particularly add?
They're, they're still working, um, close to schedule. They may be a day or two behind, but that's just to be expected weather-related and steel-related and a couple of, they have the rain and, and like, like they said, copious amounts at times. It's not like it sprinkles, it just, it pours, um, so they're dealing with that. What I liked is that, looking at change orders at 34% complete, um, which is, uh, quite a bit complete. We, we've only used approximately 2% of our contingency budget. Yep. And.
It's over $4 million.
And as of right now, completely approved as a percentage of the whole budget, we're at 0.4% of, of, of changes, um, costs, increased costs. And some of that, which it's completely unforeseen because some designs were, they can't design it until they, they, they come out and actually dig it up and look at the foundations for the dugouts and the foundations for, um, the, the goalposts and stuff like that. So until that was done, then they had to add more steel to it and, you know, 2,000 here, 2,000 there. It does add up over a little bit here and there. I'm a little cantankerous over $2,000, but we're watching it, we're watching every penny, which is what we do. That's what we get paid to do, like the, the big budget, zero. But it's, it's what we get paid to do, I always say that, uh, but the project's moving along. I'm just hoping that if the weather would hold out, um, we get that building closed in, then we can work all winter long in that building, um, more comfortably, so. Yep, yep, but, uh, they've held off on some, um, some, um, some sod, which they might try to do, which is at their own peril. Because it's after October 15th, there's, there's, uh, two fields that are completely sodded in. Everything's at their own peril technically until we take full ownership, but, but, uh, um, they might even try to get that additional sod down if we had weather, but the way that outlook looking, it's cold from here on out.
In our meeting today, what they talked about is if they can't get the sod down, then they will do some, like a hydro seed formula without the seed. And they, they blast it over the entire top just to save the topsoil. And it is, as, as Mr. Givernoni said, it is, this does fall to them. Because this was something that should have been done before October 15th. The rain set them back, however, it's still on them. So if they put sod down and it doesn't take, then they'll take it all off and re-sod in, in the spring. So again, that's on them, but it does affect our schedule, it does affect our athletic schedule. So, you know, we'll be using, uh, fields elsewhere in the spring. We will be able to use the varsity baseball, the, the varsity softball and the track. But we will not be able to use the sort of soccer field area, lacrosse area and the JV baseball, so.
The students are using the field as is right now for, for gym class. My son was practicing on the, the track, so it's, it, there's, it's some parts of it are getting used right now, so.
Now, Brian, again, just to make the community aware, all those fields are being used, they're not good to the public. It is, it is still a construction area. And when our kids go out, they're going out under supervision of a teacher, um, or a coach, depending on what they're doing. So, and they're, we're making sure they're not near the construction areas. Anything else, Dan? Any questions about that? All right. Yes.
I was just curious, 34%, what is that based on? Dollars expended?
No, it's 100% of the project, so 34% is complete.
34% of dollars spent.
Dollars, okay, got it.
It's based on the dollars spent. On the construction budget, because construction, the, the whole project's 104, but the construction's 82, 83. So it's based on that number, so 34. Like last, last, yesterday's bill was almost $4 million for the month of October. The month before was five and change, so. Yeah. Lot of money.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as approved.
Do I have a second?
Presented.
Discussion. Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Genonymous. MAS, C, MASSS Joint Conference. Very exciting news, I'm not going to go over every single one of them, but there were nine resolutions. All were voted in the affirmative, with some minor changes on each. And there was a tenth, which was to change a, a piece in the, um, MASSS bylaws to allow that. MASSS now has a, um, a minority group. And so a member of the minority group can be a member of the Board of Directors for MASSS, so that was the change. But they voted everything in affirmative, so everything was fine. We had a very good conference, the superintendent and I presented at the conference with, uh, DRA.
Yep. And. Bud Wooden, our designer, and the principal from Stoughton High School.
And, um, the superintendent, and the principal of Stoughton High, and it wasn't as boring as you'd think. So I was very impressed. You're welcome. So it was a good time. I, I really liked the joint conference, it's an opportunity to spend a lot of time and meet, um, sort of our peers and also, um, spend some more time with superintendents. And, and the good news is, as a lot of us say, it's fun to go and hear the stories of the other schools and realize how good your school is. So, that's fun. Any questions about that? And I can't recommend it enough, so if you get a chance, please go. As, uh, I, I believe the super, I know the superintendent included in his Friday flash, our lawyer, um, has since moved, uh, from, uh, her firm. She's going to work for the Commonwealth in the, uh, court system. She's going to be the legal HR person for, uh, Massachusetts District Courts around the state. And I wanted to get a feel from all of you. A superintendent and I had a conversation at the, uh, conference, partly, um, through workshops that we had taken. That, uh, you know, given over the point, the past, we've all had conversations about, for example, with the before and after school program. We reached a point where we decided to go out and look at that and review that. Uh, the superintendent and I wanted to present to you all tonight and, and get your feeling about, uh, looking at our legal piece. It has been, I am in, starting my seventh year on this committee, it has been the same attorneys the whole time. It just seems to me as to be, uh, where we're, uh, losing our regular attorney. It seems to me to be that perfect opportunity, what the superintendent and I had planned to do was, uh, work together because we're the two that deal with the lawyer the most and, uh, meet with Carolyn Lyons, because she handles the special ed part of it. And then have conversations with administration afterwards, um, and just see what's out there and what opportunities lie for us and see, uh, where we go. And then at some point come back to this full committee and make a presentation about, especially around budget time, about what we want to do with our legal fees. And that could be, it, it could be a variety of things. It could be defining a new firm, it could also mean splitting the special ed account and the regular account and having two different firms do it. Or, uh, there are firms out there that are, are bigger and do have more, uh, opportunities when, depending on what you get into. So for example, one firm that I've used in the past in the past school committee, Murphy Hess, Tumi and Lahane, does a lot of work with a wide variety of not only schools, but towns. And so they have attorneys on staff who, for example, handle a wide variety of things that you would run into in town, especially like HR things and things like that. So it, it offers different opportunities. And so it just made sense to us, if you are in agreement, that it makes sense to go out and just start looking and coming back with a recommendation for the whole committee about what, what sort of makes sense for us. Especially since we're about to, we've lost our attorney and we're about to enter into budget negotiation, budget discussion anyways. Mr. Oak?
Just curious, um, how, in any given year, how many times do we utilize the services of the attorney? Is it every day, every week, or is it once?
$1,000 on lawyers.
On what?
Yeah, well, I mean, depending on the year we spent. And so it depends on what happens. I mean, to be honest with you, um, for example, when we do negotiations, we spend a lot more time on our end with attorneys. The superintendent spends more time with attorneys. Uh, I think special ed, uh, depending on what's happening, we'll have, you know, and so it varies. I also think that we've, you know, there have been times when, um, Brian has told an administrator to talk to our attorney and have conversations, uh, before they do something or something's going on and they want some guidance. So it's not really a set time, Rich. I mean, we have, we have, um, a contingency fee that we pay. And then there's a, there's essentially a sep- separate section for special ed. We happen to use the same firm, um, which is not always the case in different districts. And so that's, like I said, I think it's, I think for big ticket items, it makes sense to every once in a while just look and see what's out there and what opportunities lie or, you know, I, I, to be honest with you, I like our attorneys. But again, I've only dealt with one person, um, generally through the whole time. There is a different person that deals with special ed than us, but sometimes our attorney was dealing with special ed depending on what it was. So it, it varied.
And keeping in mind that our PPS director is an attorney herself, who worked for Murphy Hess, Tumi and Lahane. So that helps a lot. She happens to be tied in, uh, Colby Brunt is the attorney we use through Stonem, Chandler and Miller for special education. And, and I think that's a good, strong relationship there. So we'll see what Carolyn Lyons has to say when we meet with her with regard. But, but she'll, she has a lot of input in this area because that was her area for a lot of years, so.
This is probably just my lack of understanding of how these things work, but are we currently unrepresented? Is it, we have someone, so we have the luxury of time to look around?
Our attorney told Brian and I she was leaving. She said she recommended somebody that we both know and have dealt with. And so it was.
Chandler and Miller have a number of attorneys, so.
So it was a conversation about, were we comfortable with that attorney? And having dealt with them in the past, we, we were fine with that, um, and we said we were fine. Or the other option that was given to us is we could sit down and interview people. But like I said, it just, you know, when you go to the conference, there are probably four or five attorney firms that you run into. And like I said, I've dealt with it, I've dealt with two other attorney firms at, at different times. I don't believe, Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, when I first came on the committee, I do not believe that Stonem, Chandler and Miller handled our special ed at that time. There was somebody else because we brought them on in the middle of it, right?
What happened was is somebody decided unilaterally to change attorneys on us at one point. And it was not a happy meeting after that. Oh, yeah. I appreciate as, as a member of this committee that you're talking about this because I think it's, now's the time to look at it. If, if, I mean, I like who was representing us. I like, I like just the, the attorney in general, I like Cody, I've never met Cody, but has done a great job, haven't heard anything bad. But now's the time, we should always look at this because you know what? We, there may be something else out there, um, that someone might offer us, um, a, a, a service that we, you know, didn't think of. We're fortunate to have an incredible, um, PPS director who can really help us with this too. We, we originally, I remember when the split occurred, one of the problems was we were, we were using one attorney and all of a sudden switch attorneys and it's like, wait, wait a minute, well, you know, this is something that you, you got to be careful about because, um, we wanted to keep attorneys under one roof, if possible, because it always works out that if you have an issue, you already have another relationship with a different attorney in that same house. Like when we had, we've had an issue before and Cody jumped in. It was a great opportunity that we had and we had that relationship to start with. So, but I think absolutely we should take a look at this, it's, uh, it's definitely something worth looking at. Someone might offer us something, um, not dollar wise, I'm just thinking, just service wise, that they might be able to, you'd give us something unique that we didn't think of. So I think it's a great opportunity for us.
But to, through you, Mr. Chair, back to Mr. Oakley a little bit, but in terms of negotiations, in terms of any matter regarding personnel, legal matters, student discipline, advisory on student. personnel, legal matters, student discipline, advisory on student discipline, if it's 37.5H, 37.3 quarter H, what are we dealing with? Making sure that we're on the right path. We have really high-quality administrators in the district who will be able to call her and say, listen, this is what I think, and then vet it through an attorney, because we always need to be careful about that. Obviously, negotiations are something that's important. Contract language can come down to a word, as we know, because we went through some arbitration a couple of years back. We have a matter that's going before arbitration coming up. We need to be strongly represented by someone in that matter. So that's going to go to an arbitration hearing. So we definitely need those attorneys to help us out with particular matters. But those are the main pieces, having somebody with us in during negotiations. Probably not as much in IBB, interest-based bargaining, perhaps. But in the old-style negotiations, having somebody there was really important. So there are a number of important matters that are on day-to-day. We pay them, we agree on a lump sum for the year, and then they send us the hours, and sometimes we don't use all the hours, and sometimes we go over the hours. So we have a language with them that says this amount. We budget slightly higher, just in case it goes over. So we'll see what those numbers are like, and we can evaluate those numbers through the years, too. So, no problem.
The discussion that we would have is that if there was a change to be made, it would happen in July. So we would maintain what we have currently, and then in July, there'd be a change, if we were going to make a change. And we're not, we don't go into this with a recommendation to do anything else. We just go into it, like I said, which was, we went to the conference, we both have other contacts, especially with attorney firms that we've dealt with in the past. We're sitting there having a conversation, and then when we went to lunch, we just sat together and said, hey, you know what? Since this is going on, does it make sense? And we both came to the same conclusion at the same time, does it make sense to have a discussion about, okay, let's look at what we have and bring Caroline in and everybody, and just have a conversation about it. And, you know, we may get back that we want to keep what we have, because it makes sense. But, you know, and I want to emphasize that we've had a good relationship with the law firm, but by the same token, it is, it's a business. And it's also, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to, once in a while, check around to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck, as, you know, as we, like I said, as we did with the before-and-after school program. You know, every once in a while, you have to just make a look at it and then see what's out there. And clearly, I would say that, especially the monetary side, was hugely different when we did that. And so, I don't know that that's going to be the case in the law firms, but it's just something I think we need to look at, because we haven't looked. Like I said, this hasn't been a discussion for the seven years that I've been on the board. So, so it's good. Other than that piece that we had just talked about.
And ironically, Andrea's been representing us for almost nine years now, but prior to that was, I think it was Attorney Chandler was represent-
Yeah, or Miller.
Or Miller. One of the two was representing the district prior to that. So it's kind of almost, the time, like I said, it's the time to look at it, because we're making this change. So.
And I will say this to you, to be honest with you, I haven't had this conversation with Brian, but I have had a conversation with the superintendent, that I would say to you all, given our last round of negotiations, and given that our attorney got ill in the middle of them, depending on the structure of this board, I could see recommending using less of our attorney in negotiations than we have in the past, primarily because I think there's things that we can handle. I agree, it's about language, and, you know, everything gets revolved around the, we're going to have our attorney check it out. But I don't know that the attorney has to be there all the time. And, you know, that's a decision we'll make three years from now. But, and it could be a whole new board, so, you know what I'm saying. But, you know, there's that opportunity, too, which is it doesn't have to, it doesn't, you know, things can change, and I think reasonably so. Like I said, I think we negotiated this contract with a lot less attorney input than we have in the past. So I just, you know, and some of that's, you know, just by their very nature, butts heads at times, and it can be tough. So, does that make sense to everybody? Does that, you know, I'm not looking for a vote as much as I'm just looking for, you know, it's, to me, it's still part of the evolution of the budget and what we do. And so we'll start that process and start those conversations, and, like I said, get back to you, probably at some point in the budgetary development. So, okay. We don't have any policy updates. Next item on the agenda is the 2020, 2021 calendar.
Motion to approve the calendar. Presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, guys. And just so everyone knows, on the calendar, as of right now, because somebody sent me a note, and I understand their point of view, the, nine-one is not listed as the primary date. But there is a bill that they're still working on and trying, in joint committee. I know nine-one's, I'm 99% certain it's going to be the date, given the problem that they're trying to work out. And it was, it reached unanimously in both the House and the Senate, so I can't think that that's going to change. So I just want to say that upfront. The other information that I had sent you was MASSS and the Lieutenant Governor's Office had asked that school committees vote to be a respectful school district. And I sent you the language that was in the warning. It has to do with kids making right choices and dating. It made sense to me. We don't do this this often, but they're really trying to get school committees behind it. It, you know, it doesn't involve anything unless, other than if we vote for it tonight, I have to tell the Lieutenant Governor's Office that we did, and we get put on a special map. And Paul always likes school on good maps, right, Paul?
Chair.
Yes.
I would move that we become a respectful school district.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Without reading the whole thing, one of the things is, when I read this and it says, "The goal of reducing the number of individuals who experience sexual assault and domestic violence in their life." And that, just that alone is, and it's all part of teaching students, and, quite frankly, in their home life, too, that they should be aware and not subject to this, and it's not okay. They deserve that respect. So, I, when I read through this, I said, wow, this is kind of a cool thing. And why wasn't it done earlier? Sorry. It's just one of those things that, you know, it's sad that we have to do this, but we have to, because I don't think people are doing this enough on their own.
You know, I will say this, though. The one thing that I want to say is this, I think there are, there are lots of districts, and we, you know, we've, to some extent, we've evolved over a period of time. There are lots of districts who don't take positions on political pieces and don't, don't do this sort of thing. I mean, we did, obviously, when we discussed charter schools an election ago, the question on charter schools, we also, you know, have brought up these things to have conversation. We're, you know, I am fine with us, and I think we should be, in a lot of ways, quite political, especially with our legislative delegation, to say, you know, this is a bad bill for us, this is a good bill for us, we need your help with this. You know, we talked about this in the past. But I also think that there's, you know, it starts from here, and, you know, we've, you know, Brian's made it a commitment for the district to work about social and emotional learning. And, you know, there, in my mind, there is, this is a simple thing that we can do and support that falls within that, in that piece, too, which is about-
Basically, say that we do this every day. This is just sort of a formal proclamation that we are a district that encourages students to respect each other.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We took the vote on final activities. We have a list of new hires and donations. Before we adjourn, our next meeting, this is, this is a one-meeting month, so our next meeting is December 5th. So I wish you all and everybody out there in television land a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.